We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. And here we are, with the banner of the United Nations, on the nation, under God, in the Lord, delivering justice for all.
The next item on the agenda, is this working? Okay. Is going to be, there was one person signed up for public input and after speaking to him, he's waived his request. So the next item is council comments. Councilor Bettison, oh, I forgot to ask Councilor Ray if he would read our mission statement.
Thank you, Mayor. Silver City is a hub of an inclusive community, settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and a high quality of life.
Thank you. And next will be council comments. Councilor Bettison, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor, have it move.
Thank you, Councilor Bettison.
There's been some speed bumps put in around town. I drove over one and there's been some comments about it that people don't like it. I didn't find it to be very bad. Anything that slows traffic down around town, I think is a good deal. Thank you, Peter Pena. My car sits right on top of one. But I just wanted to thank him for doing the work and making a nice, nice speed table.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Peter Pena and the Streets Department personnel for a quick attention given to certain areas in the town for the recent rainfalls, especially up in the Little One area and Cooper Street. The Streets Department also has been cleaning downtown very early in the morning and they're usually there between 6:30 and 7 o'clock and they've been doing up and down on Brolard. And I want to thank Mr. Pena for doing that. I have been approached by some individuals from the Little League as to what the town can do to promote Scott Park. And I will ask Mr. Mayor and I'll ask Mr. Brown to see if we can do something to promote Scott Park for next year. Maybe they can have some sort of termist come down here with you guys' permission. Also, the Scott Park, if you guys haven't gone out there, go out there. It is nice. It's a very nice field so far, the one that they have already completed. The car show this past weekend had a lot of participants and cheers to the guys that put up the, the organizers of participants and the car show sponsors. I want to ask a favor of the town, of the people from Silver, to ask the bicycle people that are riding the bikes, that are pedaling the bikes, ask them to be sure and stop at the stop signs and ask them nicely. I know we've had a lot of complaints about them and maybe by asking nicely, they'll be stopping at stop signs. I, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Maronis?
Mr. Mayor, no comments.
Thank you. I wanted to remind everybody that we have numerous openings on boards and commissions. If I get to the document, I'll tell you which ones. We have several openings on the Grant County Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission, several openings on the Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Citizens Advisory Committee. There is openings on the Museum Board. There's openings on the Incentive Review Committee. There's openings on Planning and Zoning Commission as well as Parks and Recreation. So take a look at our website or contact the Town Clerk's Office and she can help you out with the application for those. The Planning and Zoning Commission is just absolutely critical that we get it filled and are able to have a quorum so that the business of the town and the citizens that are wanting to do things with their property can be addressed in an efficient manner. The next item up is the Essential Air Service. As many of you know, it was advertised, oh, probably 60 days ago, that the Great Lakes filed a notice of termination to serve the Grant County Airport. And essentially what that notice of termination said is they want the case reopened so that they can increase their subsidy that they were receiving. The Department of Transportation at a federal level reopened the case and requested proposals for providers of air service to Grant County. And currently we're tied into the Clovis contract as well, of which we're objecting to that in a more strenuous manner at this point, that if anybody in DC owned a Globe, they would not tie us contractually for air service to Clovis. We have received two proposals for the RFP. One of them is from Seaport Airlines and one of them is from Great Lakes. They're extremely different. I'm not going to get into the big details of the proposals, but Seaport offers potentially two different airplanes. Both of them are non-pressurized, nine passengers, and they go to Albuquerque. The Great Lakes proposal is very difficult to read, but in speaking with them and trying to dissect their proposal, it is flights to Phoenix or Denver. We spent three hours yesterday working on this with, in partnership with the county and our attorney came up with a brilliant idea of having them partner together. They are considering that. They will be in Silver City on the 6th at 9:00 AM in the, at the Grant County Commission meeting in this very room. And both airlines will present their companies to the community. And I would encourage anybody that has interest in the flight service out of, out of and into Grant County, attend that and, and after that, please give us input on what is desirable and what you think will serve the community best. The, if you go to regulations.gov, you can, you can look up Silver City and get to the docket and you can also submit comments via the website, onto the, the federal website for this case. Also wanted to let everybody know the Military and Veterans Affairs Committee met in Silver City this week. That's the interim legislative committee for New Mexico and they had a very productive meeting yesterday. It was, it was very interesting and got to, the veterans got a chance to speak of, on their concerns for healthcare and other services that, that they're needing locally. And then Alex, I wanted to see if you'd had any discussions with Peter, reference the speed tables that were put in on Cooper. They're already in pretty bad shape. They're cracking.
Yes, we're actually having an engineer look at them to help us redesign it so that we can avoid that. Part of the problem is because there's no sidewalks, they start cracking from the edges and, and moving, so we're trying to figure out some way of designing it so that in areas where there isn't a sidewalk, we can go ahead and, and put them in a different way.
Thanks. And then I don't normally do this, but I'm going to take some personal privilege and today is my 15th anniversary with my wife and I truly support her or appreciate her support that she's given me and all the crazy endeavors that I've done in my career in EMS to crazy idea of becoming mayor of this town. And the first several years, she attended, I think, every meeting. And now we have grandkids at home and she's not able to attend as often, but I really appreciate her support and wanted to publicly announce that and thank her for sticking with me. Surely can't be easy. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And we will move on. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting, August 14th, 2012. Councilor Ray?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a correction to the last meeting minutes. The very first sentence, the council commented on the following, thanks for giving to Julia Morales, it should have been Julia, I mean, I'm sorry, Julie Saliz and her crew. Thank you.
Any objections?
It's okay. Okay, so, no objection.
Is there a motion?
I motion to approve.
The minute is with a correction?
I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council of August 14th, 2012 as corrected. Any discussion? There's a motion, a second, to approve as corrected. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
I don't have any reports.
Thank you. Chief? That was quick. The, excuse me, next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of ordinance number 1209, an ordinance amending Chapter 52 Utilities, Article 3, Water and Sewer Rates and Charges, Section 52-71, Water Rates of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. This is an ordinance that was put in, there's, there's two things happening. One is that we're adjusting the water rate with an increase of about 3%. The, just to give you an idea of what that actually means is on the minimum charge of, is currently 9.95 for the first 3,000 gallons, it would go up 30 cents. The second tier of 1,000 to 3,000, or to 13,000 goes up 10 cents. The third tier of, measured by 1,000 gallons, over 13,000 gallons, goes up 12 cents. The in-town commercial water rates has the same increase. The out-of-town residential rates has the same increase on the minimum charge with the second and third tiers being 17 cents and 20 cents respectively. And the out-of-town commercial water rates is the same increases as the out-of-town residential water rates. The, the second thing that goes on in this ordinance is that we are tying this into the same process that we use for the sewer rates. The ordinance that was, that governs how we control our sewer rates was passed in 2008 and it basically ties it in, excuse me, it ties it into our budget. And as we establish the budget, it, what this does is make the town manager provide us the information on his projections for the next year to ensure that the, the water fund will pay for itself. Currently, it is not paying for itself and thus the 3% increase. And this moves the water rates and sewer rates into the budget process. The budget process, I have to mention, is the most published and publicized of any ordinance that we do all year long. The, it has hearings, it has, we didn't only do work sessions and ensure that the process is transparent and clean. The, the other item on this is ensuring that we have a 1/12 reserve to cover emergent costs of maintaining the water system and provisions of water that is not planned. The reason that that is important is a couple of years ago, well, several years, probably five, maybe close to six years ago, we had a major, major water line break over off of Alabama Street that was hugely expensive to repair. This last couple of years, we've had very large fire seasons which caused us to pump thousands and thousands of gallons of water that is not built. And currently, with the fund running very tight, there's, there's no fund left in the, in the water fund to support our emergent needs of the system. So that is what the, the reserve is for. The, I do have some additional wording that I would like the council to consider and it's on the second whereas on the last line. Right after maintenance is to insert operations. So the whereas would, would read, "The Town Council concludes that a modest 3% increase of water rates applicable to all consumers of water, both within and without the town's boundary, is necessary to cover costs and charges incurred by the town in the construction, repair, maintenance, operations, and expansion of the town's water system infrastructure." Second, I would like to see inserted is under Chapter 52, 52-71, Water Rates, that's the bottom of the page, is insert a new A. "The town manager shall make his recommendation to set water rates commensurate with the projected debt service costs for the next 12 months. This shall include consideration of all expenses to operate, maintain, repair, expand, improve the water system, and maintain a minimum of 1/12 reserve to cover emergent costs of maintaining the water system and provision of water that is not planned. There shall be a base monthly rate. In addition, there shall be a charge per 1,000 gallons of metered water consumed per month. The charge therefore shall be commensurate with the user's pro-rata share of the projected total operating expenses of the town's water system as projected for the next following 12 months." And what this does is tie in very similar language to what is currently in the code for the sewer rates. And at this point, I will open up the discussion on ordinance number 1209. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Come to the podium, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Thomas Mupp. I'm a different being on this side. I'd like to address this issue of the proposed water ordinance. First of all, I have absolutely no qualm with the rates that are being proposed in this ordinance. I realize you're going to always have increased costs for energy to pump, maintenance, labor, so forth and so on, and that's just current economic conditions. I think the 3% is actually very reasonable. However, I am adamantly opposed to the city manager's ability to arbitrarily increase these rates without a thorough public review and input. Now, from what you've said just now, I, I may have misunderstood some based on the city website and, and the paper as to how much of this has been publicized. However, other utilities within the state are all governed by the Public Utility Commission and rate increases are subject to very strict procedures regarding public review and public input. Now, for many, many years, the town has been very fortunate to have an excellent town manager. Hold him down, don't let his head get inflated. Alex has, has been excellent as a town manager, but we may not always have that fortunate position to have a good town manager that can set these rates within reason. Because of that eventuality, it's imperative that the opportunity for public review of any of these proposed rates be available for complete review by the public. And I would ask that the city council vote accordingly so that the, the city manager can't arbitrarily set rates on this. Thank you.
Okay. Let me clear up some things.
Okay.
If the paper implied that, it was an error. The city manager does not set the rates for any of the rates or fees for the town, the town council does. All of the town council's business is done in a public meeting that is advertised, that goes through the process. The rates are not, and never have been, and never will be, done by the town manager independently or arbitrarily. The ordinance as read and as I recommend to amend it tonight, make sure that the rates are put into process. The, what we're doing is tying in the rates and the rate increase into the budget cycle. When you, right now, we're looking at the rate ordinance in August. The budget is done in July. We're forcing the town manager to do it before the budget so that it can be included as the council deems fit. And that will make sure that our budget is actually closer to real than, than it may have been. The, this is a, this is a process that was put in and you voted for in 2008 for the sewer rates. And it's, it's just cleaning up the calendar as to where we consider the, the water rates.
In that case, I may have misinformed. I stand corrected. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom. Just of note, real quick, come on up, Bodhi, but I just wanted to point out that looking at the, the median water rates for the state on the first 6,000 gallons of water, the median rate is $37.80 where ours with the increase is about 19. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, HR Bodhi Chavez here. I think the paper did misinform the public or, I don't know if it was intentional or unintentional or what, but the way it was written is what, what he heard, you know? So after reading the ordinance and speaking with different people here and the attorney and Mr. Brown and Councilor Ray and yourself, I'm convinced that everything's according to Hoyle here and I think it's a good process to do, you're going to have going here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Any comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Bettison?
I, I would just like to state that I'm pleased to see this come before us where it is concurrent with our consideration of the preliminary budget for the town and that it does really, in the long run, makes our budgets much more accurate going forward in the future, much more real than they have been to know if there may need to be an adjustment as recommended by the town manager, that we can take action if necessary in the preliminary budgeting process. So, and if the public does have that opportunity, as they always do, to comment on any rate adjustments that might be sought. So, thank you.
Any comments? Council Maronis?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I've always kind of advocated that, or at least noted, that the budget process is probably the most important process that we undertake here and I've always expressed my displeasure at the lack of public input and if this actually promotes and entices more public input in the budgetary process, I think we're actually moving worlds ahead for the town. I do appreciate the, the additional language that you're proposing simply because even though the, as it's written, the manager is recommending an increase, you've actually taken, you've actually taken it a step further with that, with those words and actually made it completely non-arbitrary. It's actually very set and specific as to what he's looking at to come up with a calculation that, that gives us a real, a real answer as to why his recommendation is the way it is. So I really appreciate that wording and I think I would be willing to support this ordinance with that amendment.
I also want to point out that currently the, the water and sewer fund are what you'd consider an enterprise fund, which means that they, they should stand alone within the budget. The water fund does not currently stand alone within the budget with the increases, especially to our electric, electric bill. It has taken it out. The 3% sets us on a course to slowly correct that balance. Right now, we are having to subsidize the water sewer fund with grocery receipts out of the general fund and where this sets us on a course to, to rectify some of that without putting in, say, a 9 or 10% increase in one year that people would, would feel strongly. So what my goal is in doing this slowly is that, that we start correcting the enterprise fund to self-supporting and as it should be and return the grocery receipts to town operations and fixing the streets and et cetera. Any other discussion? Entertainer motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 1209 and ordinance amending Chapter 52 Utilities, Article 3, Water and Sewer Rates and Charges, Section 52-71, Water Rates of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code with the following amendments. With the second whereas on the last line after maintenance, add operations so that it reads, "Whereas, the Town Council concludes that a modest 3% increase of water rates applicable to all consumers of water, both within and without the town's boundary, is necessary to cover costs and charges incurred by the town in its, in the construction, repair, maintenance, operations, and expansion of the town's water system infrastructure." In the second amendment, after Chapter 52, 52-71, Water Rates, at the bottom of Page 1 of 4, a new A that states, "The town manager shall make his recommendation to set water rates commensurate with the projected debt service costs for the next 12 months. This shall include consideration of all expenses to operate, maintain, repair, expand, improve the water system, and maintain a minimum of 1/12 reserve to cover emergent costs of maintaining the water system and provision of water that is not planned. There shall be a base monthly rate. In addition, there shall be a charge per 1,000 gallons of metered water consumed per month. The charge therefore shall be commensurate with the user's pro-rata share of the projected total operating expenses of the town's water system as projected for the next following 12 months." And with the new A, all subsequent numbers or items would be readjusted, would be renumerated.
See how it's going.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? There is a motion and a second, no further discussion to, excuse me, approve ordinance number 1209 and ordinance amending Chapter 52 Utilities, Article 3, Water and Sewer Rates and Charges, Section 52-71, Water Rates of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code as amended and read twice tonight. And roll call, please.
Counselor Perez. Counselor Cook.
Hi.
Counselor Ray.
Hi.
Counselor Maronis.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of Resolution Number 2012-22, a resolution adopting the 2014-2018 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, also commonly referred to as the ICIP. Mr. Brown?
Well, you have a resolution adopting the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan that's been developed by staff. The staff, the plan was put together, was coordinated by Jamie, reading in the Community Development Department. She worked with all the departments to identify their priority capital improvement needs. Then what we did was we turned around and we ranked them by our ability to fund them, probability of them being funded, and what they actually, our most important infrastructure needs are currently. This is a five-year plan. Probably the most important one is the first year. The state uses it to look at how they might fund us and help us with our capital improvement projects. It also is being used to help support federal funding as well. So, if you have any questions on any of the projects, Jamie and I are ready for any questions you might have.
Counselor Perez.
Thanks for the explanation, Mr. Brown. I appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. On the first page, under the sidewalks of Silver City, I want to comment that I'm pleased to see that there are monies across every one of the years, so that there's, for the next five years, there's going to be adjustments to our sidewalks and, you know, hopefully cleaning up some of the problems. And I guess one of the things that I'd like to know is, I know that I've had several citizens in District 1 who I've passed on some of their concerns about eroding mainly WPA sidewalks in District 1. A lot of that was put up during that time period. So, we've got, you know, some are, just like in other areas of the town, are well-maintained. They seem to be fine, but some of them have popped and, you know, they're eroding out, and it's just could have been the time that they were laid or something to do with the cement that may have been used. So, I'm hoping that when citizens send it, whether it's through their council or directly to the town, that those sorts of things are put on the list to be looked at first.
Yes. What we do is, the Public Works Department, the Streets Department continually goes out and they identify sidewalks that are needed to repair. We also include, we receive requests from residents to replace sidewalks. And we either replace or install new sidewalks. In those cases, a lot of the times, we have two lists when there's a request made. One is where the resident is willing to cost share with us, the town, and the other is where they just want us to go in and install it, all at the town's expense. So, what we do is, the one where we cost share is usually the one that gets taken care of first. And when we, unless it's a really important safety issue, then we'll, the other sidewalks are left as an added lower level of priority. But, you know, as you know, we've continually tried to use our co-op project for sidewalks. And because, you know, I believe what we did, two blocks last year for approximately $130,000. So, it's not cheap to do it. So, you know, we know that there is a lot of work that needs to be done out there, so it's never going to end as far, well, sidewalks rose any of it. So, we just need to continue identifying which are in the worst need of, the most need of replacement, repair, and continue from there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, most of the, when residents do say something to me, it's because, like many residents in our town, they are walkers. And so, they're not necessarily going to their neighbors and saying, you know, hopefully you'll cost share to get, you know, the sidewalk in front of your place, you know? Or it could be a townhouse lot or a vacant lot, you know, at least there's no home on it, you know, at this point. But they're walkers, and so, you know, they're concerned because they, you know, they have to walk in the street because the sidewalk is in poor condition. So, that's usually how I get information, and I think that that's the way some of that comes about in many cases.
In fact, we're starting to work, we've been working on the paving sidewalk master plan, which we're trying to get on a GIS system so that we can identify it on a map that we can, as we fix sidewalks and re-identify different priorities, we can maintain that GIS map with the priorities on it and continually use that map to prioritize sidewalks as far as those that we have to take care of are in the most need of repair.
Okay, great. And I have two more things. I noticed, I'm trying to think, it's not the last page, but the page before, and I know that it's way in, it's not till 2016 and 2017. It's 2016-08 is 32nd Street paving, and then 2017-02, I would just like to see those flipped because 2016-08 is 32nd Street paving, but 2017-02 is 32nd Street water line replacement. So, you know, paving and then going back after you spent, you know, a million, several million dollars paving to rip it up and then put in a, and I know that we're careful about doing that with our CDBG monies up in the Chihuahua Hill area, we always put water lines in first and then pave. So, just be consistent, but that's way into the future.
Thank you for identifying that, and we will switch that.
Okay, great. And the last thing is, I've had a request from some residents on Royal Drive of 32nd Street. They would like to see some sidewalks with curbs and gutter on one side of the street at least. I'm not sure if there's a particular side of the street, I didn't go up and look, but somewhere in the future, we'd like to see that put on the ICIP plan.
Okay.
So, just a request from my district to see that put on there, because I don't think there's, there ain't in that area. To my knowledge, there's nothing north of 32nd on Royal.
No, I believe there's not.
Sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
I think Peter has looked at it, we've talked about it in the past. But yes, we'll look at it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Counselor Maronis?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And please bear with me, my questions are more trying to just clarify, even though we've done this before, I always, I think I know what this is, and I just want to make sure I know what this is. This is more of an aspirational-type document. This is not a budget. This was not beholden to any of these, correct?
Correct.
In fact, if we don't get monies, if grants don't come through, this isn't gonna happen.
That's correct.
If I'm not mistaken, looking at this over the years, some of these items seem to stay on this document for a long time, and mainly due to the funding?
Mainly due to funding. I think last year, we took, this last fiscal year, we took more projects off than we ever have off the list. And since I've started, this process has been required by the state. It's been more refined through the years to be, it's, you have to take more into account. It's not a wish list anymore. It's what your real needs are. And that's what you have to provide the state. And it helps us plan, look at all of the different funding sources that we have available to us, which are very limited now. But yes, it's not a wish list, and it's just making us go back and identify where true infrastructure and capital replacement needs are.
I appreciate that, because I, before I was a counselor, I did go to one of these public meetings, and it was several years back. And it truly did seem like a wish list. And I was wondering if the public input or the hearing, public hearings have changed at all, to where it's better articulated in that respect?
I'll let Jamie talk about that, because she was at the public hearings.
Okay. Yeah, if she could just describe a little bit of the public hearings, that'd be great.
...in July. And this year is the first year that the state has wanted it to be more refined and less of a wish list. So, our public meetings next year and the years that follow will specify more of what this is. It's more of a planning document, and that's where the flexibility comes in. And they also requested a lower number of projects, reducing the wish list idea so that they're actually achievable projects within the years to come. And in preparing the list, 2014 is the most detailed and the most in order. The years that proceed after that are more of a projection and more of an idea. And that's why I wanted to specify that it's a working document. And as things come up, funding may come up for something that's in 2018 to be done in 2015. And I just wanted to really stress that it's a working document and that it can be modified. Any other questions for me?
Quick, stop, maybe.
No spelling, please.
Oh, come on. Any other comments, questions? Any questions or comments from the audience? Come on up, John.
Hello, John Crowe. Yeah, I have a question. What's the list? We don't have a list. So, my question is, what is the list?
I'm not gonna read it.
Oh, well, you could have provided it.
It is provided, it's available.
You could have.
It's available in the clerk's office as required by law.
Cool, okay.
Any other comments? Entertainer motion? Mr. Mayor, Counselor.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2012, I'm sorry, 2012-22, a resolution adopting the 2014-2018 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, known as ICIP.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2012-22. Any discussion? Did you want to make the flip in the motion for 2016-08 and 2017-2?
Yes.
Of those two items?
Yes, I, so, amendment? Amendment to flip 2016-08, flip that with 2017-02?
That's an amendment. The motion is now to approve Resolution Number 2012-22, a resolution adopting the 2014-2018 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, also known as ICIP, with the exchange of 2016-08 with 2017-02. They will assume each other's positions on the list. Any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2012-22. Roll call, please.
Counselor Maronis.
Hi.
Counselor Ray.
Hi.
Counselor Cook.
Hi.
Counselor Perez.
Hi.
Motion carries. Counselor Cook. Counselor Perez.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break.
Second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
There's a motion and a second that we take a short break. All those in favor signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll call this meeting back to order, and the next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of notice of intent, ordinance number 1212, and ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 2, Museum Board, Section 30-21, Purpose, and Section 30-27, Authority to Accept Gifts and Donations of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. And Counselor Perez, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. The intent of the ordinance is to promote the efficiency of the museum board. We have two entities that currently work to serve the Silver City Museum. And one is, one that, like, that actually does recommend to the town council, trying to get my ordinance here, I'm gonna make sure I just, that serves as an advisory board to the town council, which is the Silver City Museum Board. And the second one was formed by a group of civic-minded individuals as a 501(c)(3) to actually, to receive donations to, for the town's museum, and it's the Silver City Museum Society. And that's because sometimes folks don't want to necessarily give monies directly to the Town of Silver City, which they can do, but would prefer to do it through a separate society such as the Silver City Museum Society and have that managed that way. The Town of Silver City has nothing to do directly in any oversight of the Silver City Museum Society. So, what this ordinance does is separate out distinctively the duties and responsibilities of our museum board versus what the society does. So, what this does is, it specifically states what the purpose of the board is now, and it deletes a section that originally granted the museum board, the town's museum board, the authority to accept gifts and donation, deletes that because there's already the ability by the town to outright accept gifts, and then there's the society that does that. And my understanding, talking with the museum societies, the Silver City Museum Society's current president, Liz Mickles, and also talking with the current museum board, the Town of Silver City's museum board chair, Bob Zweitzer, that that is something that the Silver City, I mean, the Town of Silver City's museum board had stopped doing anyway. They had stopped accepting gifts and stopped accepting donations because of this seemingly crossover. So, this was developed in conjunction with talking with the Silver City Museum Director, with the town manager, and I also talked with the chair of the town's museum board, who has agreed with this change and thinks that it does provide them with a concrete information and efficiencies that will really make the board move and work quite well with the museum and be able to report back to the town council and advise the town council through the town manager. So, that's, I know it was a long discussion for a very short ordinance.
Did you forget it's my anniversary already?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any comments, questions from the audience? Send it.
Hello, my name is Sandra Hicks. I was the past president of the museum board at one time. I just have one question. I don't have the original ordinance in front of me, so I apologize for this. I remember very specifically that one of the duties of the museum board was to de-accession, was to oversee the collection, and we had the first, we were the first line of deciding that things were going to be gotten rid of. And is that been replaced, or is that just not in this, is that in another part? Because we were the... Because we were the, that was part of our job was to, and we never did it, but it was part of our responsibility. If things were going to be de-assessed, it first went through the museum board, then the museum board would make the recommendation to the town council. And I don't see that in this thing. I see, I see be part of committees that do collections and their management, but that wasn't the, that was actually one of the very specific things that the museum board had was some advisory over the collections and what happened with their, you know, when things were, it was decided things shouldn't be there anymore, but there was too many things and something had to be gotten rid of.
Well, actually, the, my, you know, in looking at the documents that were being used by the board at this time, they were using outdated ordinance. They were not using the ordinance that was on the books. And the ordinance that is currently on the books that this one is amending actually stated that the board actually would create policies. And since it is an advisory board, it's not really in the realm of it to create policies. There's policies that are created by the museum staff and by the director and how to really run that, how to manage the collections, because that's what they're knowledgeable about. That doesn't mean that now with the new structure that the museum board will be, will now be participating on those sorts of committees in the terms of collections and their management. And that's where they'll, they'll lie, is they'll actually participate in those committees with museum staff. And also, I think there's an anticipation that there'll be potentially Museum, Silver City Museum Society members also participating so that they can hear from a wide audience about the movement that they're doing. And then with consultation, advice, and counsel of the museum director, that's where the new, the board can go forward and suggest policies regarding the regulation and promotion of the museum. Regulation covers all that sort of broad stature. So it's not completely eliminated. It's just that the board is not responsible for creating policies, that a department director does within its own framework.
Right, but this wasn't a policy. This was a specific job, for lack of a better word, that if, when things were going to be de-acceptioned, it was first went through the museum board for their approval, and then it went on to the town council. So that's no longer one of their jobs.
That, Sandra, it's not in the ordinance, it's not in the present ordinance at all.
It's not in the present ordinance?
No. That may have been a procedure in your bylaws or the way you work, but it's not based on the present ordinance that's in the code of ordinance. So that is actually incorrect procedure. So I just want to make sure you understand, that is not a statement in the code.
That's not in the current ordinance. Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
No, it isn't.
Specifically, the museum board shall be concerned with the following. Number one, strategic planning. Number two, collections management, i.e., creating policies related to acquisitions, loans, conservation, insurance, and de-assess, de-acceptioning, and other collections-related matters. Three, policies and planning related to museum facilities. Four, ensuring adequate financial support for the museum. Five, assessing museum operations.
What I stated was, I already stated that they would create policies, but not what she was exactly stating, which was they were the first line of defense to say no to something.
Is that correct?
That's, I'm not stating as such an old ordinance.
I thought we had, we'd gotten the most recent, we were working from that. But it was, it wasn't policy. It was specifically, you know, that if there was a decision to get rid of something from the museum, we were the first line, it went through us and then it went on to the council, because you can't just get rid of things from the museum. You have to go through a procedure. And we were the first line. Now, maybe that got changed, and I thought I had the most recent, but, you know, it's been a couple of years, and they were in three different pages, and who knows what went with what. But I just remember that as very specifically as one of the jobs, along with that financial and a couple of other things.
I understand that. My, my question is more along the line, could you veto a request by the museum?
I believe that was the sense. I mean, it was very, you know, almost unlike, very unlikely whatever happened, but it was more the fact, and I think this is what you're changing to a certain extent, Counselor Murray, but Edison, is that, that we were overseeing the museum in some ways, not all of the ways. We weren't telling people what to do, we weren't telling the staff what to do, but we were sort of responsible for, on a larger scale, for the museum. But, you know, that's fine. I don't, I don't see a problem with, I was just wondering where that job went. Who now decides if you get rid of things?
What, what this notice of intent ordinance is intending to do is make sure that it's very, very clear that the museum advisory board is an advisory board.
Right. And I believe when the ordinance, when it, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
They do not, they don't operate as a commission or a board of directors where they would have actual responsibility for setting the policy. They are there to advise and, and provide a community view to the town manager, the staff, and the council as to what they, they feel the community needs out of the museum. And that's what this notice of intent is trying to clear up, is to make sure that they're in the right role.
But I think that's definite. Now, maybe things have been changing over time and evolving, and I just haven't been paying attention, like I said, I don't have all the paperwork anymore. But I think when it was originally set up, the museum board was very much in charge of the museum in a big way, not in a small way, not in the daily, day-to-day stuff, but in charge of, you know, being responsible for it, is what I'm saying, which is why it had that fiscal responsibility.
And that was most likely inappropriate.
And it may have been. And I'm just, I'm just saying, I remember what the words were, that's all. Okay?
Thanks, Sandra.
Okay, thank you.
Liz?
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, am I speaking into this? My name is Liz Michaels, and I am the president of the Silver City Museum Society and the society board. I've been on the board for, going on three years now, and it's been my pleasure to work with the past directors, the past town museum board. And I just want to say that I want to thank Cynthia and Edison for actually calling me to talk to me because it might affect some of my board's work. And I'd also like to say that it does seem to me, in reading this document, it clarifies some things that I have been scratching my head about for two and a half years. And I could not explain to Tracy Spikes, the new director, I just couldn't. I said, well, I'm the society board, the society, I can't really speak to the town board, but it's been confusing to me. So I really applaud people for trying to make sense out of this. And we really look forward to working with the town board as it's reconstructed and with Cynthia Ann, who will be now the new member from the council, ex officio on that board. And I really say that the society wants to continue to support the museum, and I think this will clarify matters. I'd also like to make a free political announcement. If anybody hasn't been to the museum to see the new fabulous exhibits, the Mangle Chapman and the Centennial, hit down there. Thank you very much for listening to me. Any questions?
Thanks, Liz. Any other comments? Please.
Thank you. Tracy Spikes, museum director, and I want to thank Cynthia for tackling this. I think, I believe it does give clarity to the advisory role of the town board and will help all three of us, the staff at the museum, the town board, and the society to work together towards what we have planned for the future. To speak to Sandra's concerns, and I feel that the town board, in its advisory role, does bring the voice of the community to the museum. So does the society. Both boards have members from, throughout the community, and that's very important for any community museum to have. And I will always take their advice seriously and to be able to use it and direct it within committees as far as the collection goes. Yes, there is a first step, and that is us to complete like an inventory of all the things that we have and be able to weigh through a, through a big decision process on what does fit our mission at the museum, what doesn't, what do we think we might be able to de-assess so that we can provide more space for the things that we do want to take into the museum. And that will always be first, you know, our doing our due diligence and finding out what fits our criteria and what we think fits in, within the scope of the mission of the museum. But then we are going to take it to the museum board in committee of a collections committee and say, these are the things that we are thinking, these are the reasons why, and get their input and get their advice on how they feel about that. Same would be for sessions as well. We get sessions in all the time, and currently, you know, we're looking at it and we're dealing with this in a small staff of saying, well, this looks good, this is an important story. We want to take this into our collection. And we have to do that with a large set of, set of criteria as far as, well, can we properly take care of this? Is this something, you know, we, we have a certain amount of capacity, so we have to take in a lot of different things into consideration. And so even when we're considering something in, I would like to have a committee that had members from the town board and from the society to be there and say, and give us a different perspective. There might be something we're missing in how it fits with our mission. And so even things that we're taking in, it would be good to have some of that type of oversight, really, of helping us and, again, bringing the voice of the community into our, our job.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the audience? Counsel? Counselor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Notice of Intent Number 1212, an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 2, Museum Board, Section 30 dash 21, Purpose, and Section 30 dash 27, Authority to Accept Gifts and Donations of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion, a second, to approve Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1212, an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Article 2, Museum Board, Section 30 dash 21, Purpose, and Section 30 dash 27, Authority to Accept Gifts and Donations of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. There being no further discussion? Roll call. Oh, we don't need a roll call. How about all those in favor, signify the same. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And just for the record, because our next meeting is approximately 25 days from now, correct, or 15 days?
It's long.
It's over 15, which the period is that we have to wait for the NOI to be in the public is 15 days, so this will be on our next agenda. And please send our thanks to the society for all the, the support they provide the museum. The next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1213, and ordinance amending Chapter 44, Article 3, Rogers Tax, Section 44 dash 125, Advisory Board Created, Composition, Disposition of Proceeds of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Counselor Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on recommendations that were received by a number of individuals at the last Rogers Tax, a number of public individuals at the, and citizens at the last Rogers Tax, it, what was it, advisory board meeting, this one we talked about at the council, there was a suggestion that there would be term limits placed on the appointees to Rogers Tax Advisory Board because that would then promote additional community involvement and the flow of new perspective and perspectives and ideas. So this current ordinance actually would establish as a method by which to, to stagger the terms, and what it calls for is on December 31st of this year, terminating all current terms of office. At that time, the mayor would then take the current members and appoint two of those members to two-year terms, and the remaining three members to three-year terms. And thereafter, all of the appointments will be for three-year terms, meaning at the end of their term that they would then be three-year terms. So just like any of our other commissions and boards and advisory boards, many are three-year term limits, because I looked at a number of them, and they're about three-year terms. These members, if they so choose, can also reapply for their positions. There's no limit on the number of times they can reapply to this. So that's what we hope to do is to open up and involve more of our operators or owners of lodgings, operators or owners of industries that provide services or products to tourists, and the one position who is the resident of the municipality and represents the general public, also make sure that we can open that up as well to potentially new perspectives and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience want to comment? Sandra?
Sandra Hicks, currently a member of the Rogers Tax Advisory Board. I would just make one recommendation, and that is that, and I was, as I was thinking, I actually had initially was thinking, I think that the term should be five years long. And the reason I say that, now, what you could do is you could leave it that the new appointments are for two and three, but then after that, they should be five years. We only meet once a year, and it often takes new people, a year, maybe two, to get up to speed and sort of be aware of the process and sort of have a, you know, be on top of it. And, you know, the planning and zoning people, they meet sometimes twice, 12 times a year, so that's in three years, that's 36 meetings. The museum board has a minimum of six, so that's 18. Where we do, we're in three terms, we do three, you know, that would be three meetings. And it takes a while to sort of catch on to the process. You guys know, you've seen those RFPs, it takes a while to sort out the ups and downs and the downs and the downs. And then when, and then experience, having someone who's experienced provides two things. It makes things more efficient, but it also gives you that, that institutional history. You know, somebody who's been there a couple of years can say, well, this is what happened, this is what we saw over the past couple of years, which doesn't always appear in a particular RFP, and it helps to better understand what you're looking at. So my recommendation would be that you can leave the two and three for the, starting off staggered terms, but make the last one, from then on, have it be five years. But that would just be my recommendation. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the audience? Assistant Counselor? Counselor Murray?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Sandra's comments. It actually made me think of, think about this from a different direction. The first, the first thing I'm looking at is, you know, we're aspiring to have the flow of new perspective and ideas, yet not limit how many times somebody can fill that position. So I was fearing, well, we're gonna give, we're gonna give them set terms, and then if they stay in those terms forever, we're not gonna get any new, new perspective. That may not be that devastating based on what Sandra was saying, that, that maybe we want some people to, to stay in the position a little bit longer. But I, I tend to think that a three-year term limit is, is pretty good from the standpoint that it actually gives people a, a way out, gives some, gives some opportunity for others to request to be on the, this board that fulfills a very important job and a very sensitive job. And I, I think we can get a mixture of some of these appointments coming up and changing over while keeping a couple there for maybe two or three terms and giving that continuity and that experience level that, that may also be valuable. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate both Sandra's and Counselor Murray's comments. With that, I would move to approve Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1213, and ordinance amending Chapter 44, Article 3, Rogers Tax, Section 44 dash 125, Advisory Board Created, Composition, Disposition of Proceeds of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second to approve Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1213. Is there any discussion?
A comment, nothing fruitful per se, except for the fact that I've made these comments that we, when we put these NOI's, we really appreciate people talking to us and not necessarily reading things in the paper the day before we have to vote on a final thing. But ultimately, if other people have concerns about how, the length of these terms, I would appreciate some, some ideas if what the public feels is three years adequate, is do we, should it be four? Should it be less? I hope that we get a, a number of comments over this next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Counselor Bedison?
And I do have a comment. I failed to state that upon a discussion with the mayor, we realized that a critical phrase was left out of the original ordinance, and so inserted it in the amendment to the ordinance, which was that the mayor shall point with the advice and consent of council. Because before, he could appoint without our advice and consent. So we thought that it was important to place that phrasing in there along as, similar to other boards and, and commissions.
And this is my fourth term, so my sanity is in question.
Apparently. Well, you were the one that questioned that stuff.
Absolutely.
And pointed it out.
Just comment, Sandra. I appreciate your comments and I, I fully appreciate the complexity of the task that you do. I, I don't object to the three or necessarily support it or object to the five or necessarily support it. It's almost indifferent, really, for me. And I hope it continues long after I'm gone from this position, that that's why I contact you as the Chair whenever appointments come up and even reapplications, and you've been very helpful in making sure that if I have an idea of replacing somebody, that you point out why they have been valuable and why they are important to the committee in maintaining that historical knowledge. And I think that process has worked very well. And I also think Counselor Maronis makes a valid point that three years is, is a significant amount of time, even though it's one meeting. And it gives the person an out. And it also gives the council an easy out without having to put somebody on the spot that, that may be not serving as desired. So, any other comments?
I like the term, when it's three years. If they, if they're all staggered, you get people that are in there that already know what's going on if somebody is to be newly appointed. Kind of like me on council, there's three people that have already been here for a while and know what's going on. And I'm still gaining speed on this and figuring it out. But there's three people that are, you know, well-informed and one of these days, maybe I will be. And three years, some people, they might not own their business for three years or five years, and then they are kind of disqualified. So, I like the shorter terms.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second to approve Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1213, an ordinance amending Chapter 44, Article 3, Rogers Tax, Section 44-125, Advisory Board Created, Composition, Disposition of Proceeds of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code, there being no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission. And it's open. We have an application from Carl Allen Waterman. We've done, we've researched Mr. Waterman. The Chair of P&amp;Z has spoken with Mr. Waterman and comes with the recommendation to appoint as well. Just of note as well, we also changed the application in the last couple of months to allow more disclosure and also notify the applicants that they are, where's it at? That they will be considered a public officer of the Town of Silver City and must comply with the State of New Mexico Government Conduct Act, Section 1016-1. And I find Mr. Waterman to be highly qualified for the duties and would recommend his appointment if there's no objection from the council. Hearing no objections, Mr. Carl Allen Waterman is appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next item on the agenda is Appointment to Grant County Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission. And once again, we have the same applicant. The attorney, I believe, has reaffirmed that it is suitable for Mr. Waterman to serve on both or other applicants, and I find him to be qualified. There is no Chair of that commission at this point. And if there's no objection from the council, I would like to appoint Mr. Waterman again to the Grant County Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission.
No objection.
No objection.
Hearing none, Mr. Waterman is so appointed. The next item on the agenda is Appointment to the Mayor's Climate Protection Citizens Advisory Committee. We have multiple applic, or multiple openings on that committee. There's currently not even enough for them to have a quorum. And the Chair, and I concur that Gail Simmons is a qualified applicant, and I would like to appoint Gail Simmons if there's no objection from the council. Hearing no objections, Gail Simmons is so appointed. Entertained a motion to adjourn today.
Mr. Mayor, I agree to adjourn.
I second it. There's a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
And happy anniversary.